Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. We just came out of an executive session for the purpose of the discussion of hiring of a village official. I'll call the meeting back to order at 7:05. Welcome, everyone. It's the February 2nd Village Council meeting. Announcements? Happy birthday, Brian.
Woo, yay! Here's a little birthday treat from us.
Wow, all right, thank you.
Any other announcements? Mary Ann, do you want to announce the movie?
Yeah, yeah. So, I've reported the last several council meetings on a group that's been meeting called, we're calling ourselves, the Climate Action Planning Group. We're still searching for a name, but this group has various facets to it. And one facet is looking at reducing our waste consumption, which we will probably be working on possibly in the Energy Group and Environmental Commission. At any rate, Green Environmental Coalition, along with Tom Clevinger, who has a background in waste reduction, are sponsoring a movie at the Little Art. It, I think, is free. Yes, it's free, at 3 o'clock on Saturday. It's called "The Clean Bin Project." It's supposed to be very informative and entertaining about a couple who contested against each other to see which one of them could have the least waste. And so, at the end of the year, then they came up with how much waste they saved all of their waste, which was not very much, apparently. So, I would encourage people to come to see this movie, and you will be hearing more about the Climate Action Planning Group in the future.
Thanks. And just, I'll jump in with something that's connected. On April 18th, I know it's a long time in the future, but on April 18th, the Chamber will be sponsoring Shred It Day in conjunction with Glenn Helen Earth Day, and we'll be bringing in the shred-it truck. And these folks are all certified for confidentiality, so you can bring all your old tax stuff three days after, three days after your taxes are due, and get it shredded, and it's all confidential. They certify that it's all shredded confidentially. So, I think they probably do it in front of you, but...
They do.
You can actually see it on a screen.
Yeah, oh.
The truck. When they lift your stuff up, you can watch it.
Oh, get rid.
Confetti shred.
Yeah. And then we'll have a party, then, with all the confetti that comes out of it.
Oh, that should be co-hosted.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the Yellow Springs Help.org training that is going to happen on February 18th. It's at the library from 3:00 to 5:00. And this is a training for service providers to learn how to basically input their data, so that they can then be part of this online resource guide that we're developing. So, please come if you're interested.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to a review of the minutes of the meeting of January 20th. Page 1. Page 2.
Yes, under Old Business, where it starts, we noted on the western edge of the glass farm. It should be the eastern edge.
Okay. Anything else on page 2? Page 3? Page 4? Page 5? Page 6? Page 7? Page 8? And page 9? Have a motion for approval, please?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now, the minutes of the January 22nd special meeting. Do I have those in here?
Yeah.
One page, one page?
Half a page.
All those in favor signify, or, because I have, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, significantly saying aye?
Aye.
And now, to review the agenda as it stands. Was there anything that anybody wanted to add to the discussion?
Yeah, there's the application from the Arts Council, and maybe that goes under Old Business, since we talked about it at our last meeting.
You can do it right after the annual report, then.
Okay.
Citizens conservative, yeah, let's do that, yeah. And then, I know John or Patty, one of the two had...
I have the, what I put before council about...
ICMA?
The ICMA, under New Business, but I also have the request for you to think about making a decision on the solar array to have the groups present. Should have been in the packets. Did you?
Yeah, it was in the packet.
The, I'm sorry.
There was a, I put a...
Yes, you put it...
On the solar array, yes.
It was a little bit hard in electronic form, because it was sort of separate from your report, and I was trying to figure out what it was.
Yeah, it probably needs to go under Old Business, and we can discuss it under Old Business.
What is it, solar?
Just put solar array.
Okay. And then Lori, do you want to review the petitions and communications?
Sure. I'll review the two from, from Perrin, Pastor Aaron, sorry. Pastor Aaron from the Presbyterian Church wrote an appreciation note to the police department for their work on the recent burglary they had there. And MJ Gentile wrote regarding both the Drug Task Force in the Wetland, opposing the Drug Task Force, or our participation in the Drug Task Force, and supporting the Wetland grant. And then Brian had, was the sort of sponsor of about four pieces, so I thought, maybe you could just summarize.
Yeah, let me clarify a few of these. So, the first thing is, we just wanted to include the HRC request for support form, because we had the meet and greet last Thursday, and we wanted to make sure people could find that, and also announce that it can now be found online. So, you can just, on the website, search for its...
It's on HRC, it's on HRC's...
Subsite.
Yeah.
Right.
That's easiest way.
Okay. The Stream Musician Performer Agreement, this is an attachment to the Public Art Commission Annual Report, actually. But Judy and I thought it would be good for everybody to see how we're going to format the front and back, because we said we were going to disseminate those to downtown businesses. The plan is to get those laminated, so that they're, you know, they won't get messed up. And actually, the proposal related to the Arts Council's member show is from Nancy Mellon, their gallery director, and that's a follow-up based on our form that we talked about last time with their letter, so they've put that into a new format. And I thought everybody would like to see what has been going on related to municipal broadband and Next Century Cities. There was a letter that was put together that was submitted to the FCC. Patty, of course, has been our liaison with that project, and we put together, I ended up signing on behalf of council, we put together a blurb about why this is important to us. And so, that organization continues to be doing a lot of, I think, exciting things.
Right. And John will be taking over for Next Century Cities, because he's going to be the representative to CAP.
Great.
And those two things kind of go together, so.
Thank you. I appreciate, well, whatever everyone did in this regard. I read this letter that they're submitting. And I'm assuming that corporations, the big corporations, are trying to keep communities from doing their own...
Right.
So, this is important.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this is a follow-on to, you know, Obama's, you know, part of his address, where he talked about how important this is, so.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, are we, is council going to consider this under the, because it does require council action?
Yeah, that is...
Is it going to be doing that under your...
Under Old Business, that's the...
Yeah, under Old Business, first item under Old Business.
Right.
I thought that was just the annual report.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to public hearings and legislation. First, we have Resolution 2015-04, Naming Approved Check Signers.
Now, I can wait on through this.
No, I think we can do it by title only.
All right, then. All right, this is Resolution 2015-04, Check Signing for U.S. Bank General Checking and Guaranteed Deposits. And this is just adding John Young's name to the list of signers.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
All those in favor of, all those in favor, significantly saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we're under Resolution 2015-06.
We're just assuming there's no commentary or questions.
Anybody have, nobody has any questions about any of that, right?
I don't think there is, considering.
Well, you know, you never know.
Resolution 2015-06, Approving the Name John A. Eastman Water Reclamation Facility for the Water Treatment Plant.
This would be renaming the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility, whereas the village would like to recognize the contributions that John A. Eastman made to the improvement of water quality in the region, and specifically within the Village of Yellow Springs, and whereas John A. Eastman made a superior contribution as the village engineer during the most recent project upgrading the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility, and whereas John A. Eastman contributed significantly to the quality of life in Yellow Springs and the surrounding area in numerous and varied ways. Now, therefore, council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, does hereby resolve that, Section 1. The Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility shall be renamed the John A. Eastman Water Reclamation Facility for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So, I am sure most of you know that John Eastman did pass near the end of the year, and he has been a great resource for the village. He's a professional engineer, and was our consultant for the water reclamation facility that started, probably, that project probably started back in 2006, 2007. I mean, it's been, it's been going on. Spent a lot of time on that. He's just always been a great advisor. But our crew, our water reclamation crew, worked very closely with John, and felt very strongly that they would love to remember and honor John in this way. And this is basically just a piece of paper saying we're going to do it. Then we'll go through a process of actually ordering a sign and making it so later in the year, hopefully when it's a little warmer and drier, we will have a formal dedication that will invite the family and the community to. So, keep your eyes open and ears open for that, and we will be announcing it. Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And since we didn't mention it before, it's kind of related, I just wanted to mention the article that was in the online packet from Treatment Plan Operator, which, again, recognizes the amazing water reclamation facility that we have in Yellow Springs. So, 2013, we got an award for that plant, you know, once again, they're in this magazine. And it's really cool, because there's a plant in Canada, there's Yellow Springs in there, and really nice article.
And that is something, as Brian said, that is in online, in the online packet only. And it actually is, it's an excellent article. It has pictures of all of our guys. It's very personal, it's very nice. Joe is incredibly proud of it, as he should be. So, please do, if you get a chance, go online and take a look at that. The next, now is the time in our agenda where we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you come up to the front, speak into the microphone, state your name, and we have three minutes, you'll have three minutes to state your concern, and that's, and, come on, Nancy, come on up.
Sorry. Can I give handouts?
Sure.
Great. Would you like to take, take one and pass it on? And also, take one and pass it on. And this is the microphone. I'll try to be three minutes. My name is Nancy Kelly. I'm appealing for a relief from installing a water meter at 128 West North College Street at this time. Last August, my husband and I purchased a small house at 128 West North College, whose pictures, some of the pictures you have in front of you. The house was built in 1865, and has been unoccupied for about 10 years. It was in deplorable condition. The rehab has been significant, and a lot of fun, and a lot of expense, much more than we thought. On January 16th, as a matter of course of action, I called about water service and met a representative from the village, who agreed that the meter, which we had to remove during rehabbing, the second set of pictures, the black molded bathroom was, was badly corroded, that when we, that when we learned we'd removed it, that then we were going to be required by ordinance at our expense to put a in-ground meter at the front of the property. That was a shocker. On January, the calendar only shows you a series of meetings and conversations. If you have any questions about what I learned from any of the individuals, that's primarily why I provided it. Judy provided me the ordinance, 1978 ordinance, as well as council meetings leading up to the ordinance. I was looking for the council's intention for the ordinance. There was no discussion about why the ordinance came to be for the in-ground front of property pits, although we can all make reasonable guesses. But my question was, primarily, was this was the, was this a method to move all houses into in-ground front of property meters, or was it intended for new construction only? Everyone I spoke to on that list has a general understanding that if a house undergoes extensive rehabilitation and the meter's removed for any reason, whether it's broken, black mold, or witches, that the ordinance kicks into effect. But no one has been able to show me where that is in writing, that it's obligatory. The ordinance specifies that a permit is necessary, "no connection," quote, I quote this, "can be made without a written permit to do so." At no time has anyone I've spoken to on this list suggested that I need to have a permit to install a meter, which further adds to my fuel that perhaps it is intended for new construction in a booming growth period of the, of the history of the village, rather than redoing all the old homes in town. The house, this particular house has other issues other than my whining about the ordinance. It is... You're kidding?
Sorry. Is that, that's...
This is three minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, I know you've been waiting. We'll, we'll extend it for...
Oh, really?
We'll give you, we'll give you some more time.
That is fast. The, it's in the lowest piece of ground in the neighborhood, and the water runoff from both the street and the neighbor's property drained into it. It's a, it's a 1865 home. I think the other houses were built up around it. We had to jack the entire house up and replace all the sills on the base, which you see in the second or third set of pictures, because they were gone from water rot. No termites, like the water, apparently, but the water rot took the sills out, so we had to reshore up the whole thing. It was extensive, and what, there is more extensive work to be done on this property, because it is a major drainage problem, which we will do in the future. But right now, the structure is solid as a rock, and it's soon ready for occupancy. We have several concerns about the water pit itself, the water meter pit. The low ground will turn this into an immediate cistern, period. It will be filled with water. There's something called galvanic corrosion, when you have two metals submerged in liquid that creates electrical voltage, which will wreck the piping at a faster rate than if it were in dry land. This, this is going to be the effect of the copper piping required by the ordinance and the steel. I don't know whether the village has steels, but the pipe going to the house is steel. So, they will be submerged in liquid and premature failure. And the other possibilities, which are very distinct, is that it will require from us a major overhaul of the line to the house, which is expensive at this moment. So, I began to look for alternatives for the problem of the expensive water meter in the front of the property. The alternative, the simplest solution I found was, picked up from European philosophy, is they don't like their gardens torn up at expense, so they put a simple locked door on the side of the house. The meter reader opens the lock and looks at the meter, and it's read. There's no entry to the house. I also found a simple wireless system for $270 from EKM Metering in California, which is very proactive in water control, that could be installed in the house and could transmit signals to, for reads, or the monitor could be put at the window. So, again, there would be no entry necessary. On January 7th, on 19th, I spoke to Lisa Crum, a Montgomery Meter Service Supervisor, about, more about the radio read systems, which I'm sure the village is beginning to look at. They service 86,000 meters, 83,000 of which are homes. The benefits of this include improved efficiency, no more estimated billing, no human misreads, no need to enter private homes, et cetera, et cetera. What took them a week of individual meter reading, now they do in two hours. They are extremely glad they've done it, and they know that it's absolutely the way of the future. Later, when I was looking for a solution for meeting the needs of the village, and meeting our financial needs, I spoke to Lisa again about the availability of contract services with the Village of Yellow Springs. I'm not sure if the village has looked at that option. They are amenable to a discussion about, with village representatives. This could be negotiated, and then the village would not have to have the upfront start charges, which I think is where some of the numbers I'm hearing from Johnny.
I'm going to be able to give you one more minute.
Yep, and then...
Wrap up.
Okay. So, if, so that we are not forced to do a hasty job in mitigating the water, or pay a thousand, fourteen hundred, $1,400, which is the quote I have now, for putting the meter in, and into a wet environment, so that the water inspections can be passed, and I can put a tenant who is waiting in the house and move on. And so, the council might consider a retrofitting of radio read meters into the older homes. I'm appealing to the council to allow the meter to be reinstated in the original location of the house for the time being. Thank you.
I'm, I don't know that this is a decision. I don't have enough information. I don't know that this is a decision that council can or should be making. I know staff has, has put some things together. You know, what kind of a timeframe are, I mean, I feel like this is really a staff, a staff decision.
Staff is stuck with the ordinance, and the idea that it is supposed to apply to older homes in these situations.
Well, I know that, you know, I had, we had to do that in the house that we live in, because you can't have, I don't want the meter reader coming into my bathroom, getting down on his hands and knees, and, you know, looking around the toilet to read my meter. And that's what was happening, and that's what's happening in these old homes, is that the meters are inside the house, and it's inconvenient and virtually impossible to get them read.
But if it is possible to put it in the house and have it read, and, I mean, you mentioned, she mentioned several.
But we don't, but we don't have the equipment.
But here's, here's the thing, okay? Johnny, why don't you come on up while we address this? Johnny and I both have some concerns about the, the lockbox idea. One of them is the fact that it's above ground, potential freezing, that kind of thing. The idea of the, the radio read meter in the window, the remote read in the window, we discussed that when you came into the office. And while I'm not saying that you would play with your readings, if I let you do that with your system, somebody else is going to want to put one in there, and they could, we, we can't have, we need to own the meters. We own the meters, period. Johnny, do you want to address some of your concerns?
She's pretty accurate on her, on her estimate. I've got estimates for the same property from anywhere from $900 to $1,500. But we've also had other people come, want to do the same thing, put in a radio read and all that. And the answer's been, we follow the ordinance. And I know one, and it costs $3,500. They didn't like it, but they complied to the ordinance. We are in the process of looking into the radio system. It's just not going to get here fast enough to suit everybody.
Right. And council does know that's part of the capital budget that you did approve to do, was to start the, putting in the radio read. So, we know that that's the way to go. It is a time savings, and it is a lot...
And it's more expensive on the radio read if it's located in the residence versus in the pit, because it has to go to a different style meter. The, the problem with Ms. Kelly's property is, is when they did the plumbing, they redid everything. They've redone all the plumbing in the house, all the electrical, and I understand that. But they cut out the meter system. If they would have done it after the meter, we wouldn't have said not a thing about it, because they would have just re-hooked it back up. There's nothing there to hook the meter to anymore. So, that all has to be reworked. Therefore, it needs to go outside, in the pit where we supply the meter bars, the valves, and they splice into their, into the water line underground.
What about her concern that it's going to be underwater?
I don't, there's, Antioch has got a bunch of them full of water. I mean...
Meter pits fill with water.
Yeah. There's a drainage, there is pea gravel that's in the bottom of them that allow it to drain, but it's not going to hold water.
Yeah.
And if the, if the water meter breaks, the other safe thing is, is it's outside, it's not inside.
And it's ours to replace.
Correct.
At that point, it's ours.
We own the meters.
At that point, it's ours to replace.
Right.
I feel kind of ganged up against. Can I say something else?
Yeah.
The one thing that disturbs me about the expense is that mine won't be the $1,500 one. We know that. It's an older home. The excavation processes, I figure, until I know I have $10,000 available to reconfigure the front of this property, anything that we're doing is kind of a waste, and it needs it. And I'm not exactly sure who replaces the walkway. That I haven't researched, whether I am responsible for that, or whether the village replaces damaged walkways. So, I have a lot of ongoing angst about the expense. But one of the things that I think is particularly worrisome, I think, about going into this pit system, when so many communities, Fairborn, I talked to Al Kuzma, and he's in Kettering, and all these people that have these systems with meters in their homes that are radio read, is that they only cost less than $200 for one of those meters in the house, and they're owned by these services. And I, I don't know why we're not looking at a contract service. There's, I would be happy to pay several hundred dollars to have a meter in my house, so people don't come in my house. I think there'd be a lot of people in Yellow Springs that would love to upgrade, as opposed to waiting to the next 35 years, when their turn comes up to pay $1,500 and up for what amounts to $223 worth of water services for the year. And to me, the dichotomy between cost of engaging the pit, which is not necessary for the future radio read, and the benefit of getting your $223 worth of water a year is just, is unreasonable.
This is, I, I just don't, Jerry, do you feel, you're more connected with the utility department. Do you feel like this, where do you feel like we go with this?
We have an ordinance. Folks in the past have complied and been asked to comply. We are looking in future to change. Her timeframe doesn't fall in there. I'm, I'm not amenable to changing the ordinance, so making, making an exception for it.
I don't think the ordinance needs changing, because it's very clear that it's for new construction.
But that's not true, because other houses, other existing residences have complied to the ordinance.
And it's been interpreted that way.
Well, we have to, we have to have access to our own meters. That's the, that's the whole, the whole thing.
Sure.
And that's, that's the goal. So, it doesn't really have to do...
So, the European method of open door, seat meter is not adequate. I mean, it's some expense for me to do that, but I'm happy to do that.
Well, this is, this, these kinds of things are very difficult for us to do when they're thrown at us at the last minute.
Right.
A ton of information, we can't possibly make a good decision under these conditions.
And this is purely staff. I mean, I, we've heard, we've heard from three staff members who are supporting one, who are supporting one, one solution. And I don't feel competent. You know, given the options we've been given, it feels like the timeframe isn't going to fit any of them for you. I mean, this is something you want done virtually immediately.
No, absolutely not. I don't care if we ever do it. Let me explain the economics that I, from my point of view, my point of view on the economics, and I'm not being...
We can't spend more time on this.
Okay.
We've got a lot of other things on our agenda.
What would you suggest I do?
Can I ask, do John and Patty, you both agree that this pit thing is what should happen?
It needs to go outside, in my opinion. I mean, you know, that, there are reasons for it. There are safety reasons, there are liability reasons, there's access reasons. We own the pit. Once it goes in there, if it goes bad, it's our responsibility to fix it. It needs to go within the six feet, Johnny, of the roadway.
Six feet of the front property line. The sidewalk will not be, it'll go on the house side of the sidewalk where the property line is. And the material for the pit, for the customer, the day supplies... The material for the pit for the customer, the day supplies, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and four cents.
Not correct. I have a quote here in my head.
Well, we, let's, we're, so.
Yeah, I have a quote that shows that it's four hundred and fifty dollars, but from the firm that you sent me to.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, staff, staff agrees that it needs to be out by the road.
Okay.
So that's.
I don't know that because of the person up there. Okay.
Okay, thanks Nancy. Any other citizen concerns for items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to special reports. Public Art Commission Annual Report to Council. Brian, do you want to introduce that?
I do, yeah. So, and it's mentioned in the annual report. Basically, after the Public Art Commission was established, it was pretty much on hiatus for a year. There was one project initially, which was the Bronze Sculpture Symposium. This past year, in February, we started meeting again actively. And as I was like Lori talking about the Arts and Parks Commission, I mean, it's become a very busy commission, a great place for vetting projects, for community collaboration. And as I mentioned before, we've also got the Street Musician Agreement Attachment. And so Dave Turner, who has just been elected as our new secretary for the Public Art Commission, is here to present and I'll let you take it, Dave.
Well, I'm happy with what I was gonna say.
Really?
I've done in 2014, you've got this, I'm not gonna read it. I, I hope you can all read. And I've done a number of things, started out doing arts things and then, as Brian said, other things crept in, park-like things. My suggestion is we become the Parts Commission because you can find parts, parks and arts that you can end up with neatly. This year, we're gonna be working on fleshing out the scope to determine some boundaries because as we, as I said, and Brian said, we started out talking about arts things and then musicians, which is arts, but it was public spaces. And then the spillway and, you know, should be put a bridge over something instead of putting a sign saying, "Don't walk on the slippery metal thing in the water." And then other things came in which were not arts, but in the public space. So that phrase, "public space" has been floated around a lot. And I would say that other than looking at this, the thing that's the most significant to me, and we've talked about this in our meeting, is that we've done, you know, a lot of, spent a lot of effort trying to involve as many people that are infected by whatever it is that we're working on as possible. With the skate park, we talked to people who used the skate park and we had a lot of really good effort put in by people who used it. And an engineer, A.J. Warren, has done a lot of work and some other people who know about that and care about it. People did some work on their own to retrofit things and fix some things up. We invited people from the village. We talked to the police when we were talking about musicians and motorcycle noise. You know, Patty's come and, you know, done a good job of, you know, providing a wealth of information about a lot of different things. The council representatives have been there. So when we're talking about something, we're hearing from the people who are affected by it and trying to come up with something that satisfies, you know, everybody's needs as well as, as well as we can. And I think we've done a fairly good job with that. I haven't been hearing anybody complaining about it, so it's really about all I have to say about it unless there's some questions. But again, the specifics are, are in here. There you are, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
You guys did a great job.
Nice picture.
Thank you, yes. Nice report. This can be a sample of, for others.
Have we, as part of the work on commissions, have we talked about the scope of the arts and making that official? Because we kind of just made that as an ad hoc decision.
Right.
That it would be kind of arts and parks because we didn't have any other place to put the parks.
I feel like when we're doing some of this work, we are gonna, we should look at, you know, as Dave mentioned, the scope of at least the Public Art Commission. And, you know, we have talked about, should it be the Public Space Commission? And I feel like our members are game for that scope, but just having some clarity there. It certainly makes sense, given the evolution of that process when it was use of public space. So I think that will be a decision we'll have to look at as we're kind of seeing each ordinance and what we're gonna change.
And that was really the genesis of it. I mean, actually, it was the public space issue that was the genesis of it. I like the idea of having the word "art" in it. You know, I mean, I like the idea of having the word "art" and I like the word, idea of having the word "park", just because those are, I think, those are the buzzwords that I think are gonna be more interesting to people than just "public space", but you just need to make, you know, make a decision.
We could call it the Public Arts and Parks Position or Commission and then have in the description the remit about public spaces.
Right, right. And, you know, kind of, I mean, this is connecting to a lot of different things like Mary Ann's proposal that we'll talk about with the goals. And, you know, as Dave said, we're certainly looking at goals and I think we'll make some recommendations to council and see if that makes sense for what we want the commission to do.
Johnny, maybe you and Nancy could talk out in the hallway.
But remember, we have to have our door open, so if you wanna talk, it's really better to go downstairs.
As long as it doesn't become sort of a dumpy ground, "I don't know what to do with this here, what are you gonna do about this?"
Right, that's why I think getting a clearer remit would make more sense.
That would be, that would be a good, good thing to do. We had a discussion in the last meeting about doing various things and I remember specifically what it was, but the idea of not having a budget came up. Not that we necessarily have an equal need one for, for what we are tasked with or expected to do things, it'd be nice to have that considered. I'm sure you can do that. Something to keep in mind when asking us to do something. Because most of the time, I think the approach is that, come up with that idea and then, okay, yes, you know, we've given it our, we like it, go ahead, council, go, go do this. Skate park, you've got money and you've got people who care and know things, go make one. And then we'll come on something else.
I'd like to put something else in pot here. And I don't know if council is really aware of the purview of the environmental commission. When you read the ordinance establishing the, what the environmental commission covers, it's about everything. Not only even in Yellow Springs, I mean. And includes the built environment as well as the natural environment. So I think that we should probably be having some discussions with the environmental commissions around the areas of parks in particular.
Well, the environmental commission of ten, fifteen years ago did a master plan, a parks master plan for the village. So, yeah, that was, it never was, and we've got it in, we've actually have it in Word and, yeah, it's in the compound plan. I don't think it was ever formally approved by council.
Like so many things.
But, I mean, but it's, it's actually a pretty decent plan, yeah.
Right.
I think Judy has access to that somewhere. Yeah, because you sent it to me many years ago.
And it got transferred into an actual Word document because all we had was a photocopy.
Yeah, and then I think, yeah, somehow I managed to convert it to a Word doc.
And I like Mary Ann's idea about some collaboration where, you know, there might be things like youth programming that we could work together, so.
And obviously, Planning Commission is involved with any land use issues. So that's why the Parks and Rec Plan actually went to Planning Commission.
Right.
We, we discussed it and looked at it. I don't remember what we, if we actually came to any decisions about it.
Since you've been on council.
No, it was, it was, it was well before, but we looked at it because it, we knew it existed and we were wondering, what should we do with this thing? Should we update it? And honestly, I'm, yeah, it was written in the nineties. And I honestly, this was only a few years ago, but I can't remember what, what if anything, we did as a result of that conversation. But we did actually take some time to look at it.
Well, and when we're talking about collaboration with, between commissions, the, with the wireless.
Yeah.
That really should, has, has a role with Planning Commission too, so.
Yeah, yes, I do wanna reiterate a big thank you to the Public Art Commission. It's been a great working group, a lot of really good brainstorming going on. And I think just about all these projects have come back to council table. So I feel like it's certainly benefited our decision-making process. So thanks, Dave, and thanks to everybody else.
Great. Thanks, Dave, and thanks to the rest of the Public Art Commission. Do you wanna, will you please say who all, one of you, the two of you, name the members? Did you, have you named the members?
I, I haven't. So, so actually, we also elected, I was gonna save it for our next meeting, but we now have a chair, which is Christine Monroe Beard. So we've already met Dave, our secretary. We've got John Fleming, John Hudson, Matthew House. A.J. Warren is an alternate and, did I count everybody? Oh, and Patrick O'Reilly. So, yeah, so it's a great commission and actually, we still have one spot left on that commission. So we'd love to have a full, full group because we can, tend to be quite busy.
And because it's Brian's birthday and because we wanna hear him talk more, the next item on our agenda is the Arts Council proposal.
Okay. So we looked at the letter that Nancy had submitted at our last meeting and the issue came up that we, there is a policy, which was included in our packet. Basically, the policy boils down to, we will entertain sponsorship of a nonprofit project if it meets one of our village goals. And in this case, Nancy's focused on, I believe it's goal number three, about being a welcoming community. And so I think, you know, it's great that this proposal is now in the packet and something that people can easily find because I do think it provides a nice venue. I agree, it's very specific. Just a reminder, what the Arts Council is requesting is that the village essentially sponsor their member show and sort of show our support for our local artists and our creative community. So specifically asking for one of the cash awards to be sponsored on behalf of the village, which would be a hundred dollars. So I think, I mean, I felt like the proposal's pretty well articulated in terms of relating it to a village goal. So I thought it would be good for us to discuss.
Well, I'll make the motion. Ready for that?
Sure.
I move that we provide the Arts Council with the request of a hundred dollars for this purpose.
Second. Further discussion?
Yeah. We have had requests in the past and it's been nominal. And the one I can think of, and it didn't come on, on form and so forth, was a request for the soccer tournament, which what we did is we did an in-kind service. And theirs was a nominal amount also. And my concern is even though it's a, it's a very small nominal amount that was set in the presence that were sponsoring an award, I just don't think from, from a public standpoint, I just, you know, I can't, I couldn't go along with it. If they're asking for some type of service that I could do it in kind and so forth, once I get in a position where I start to sponsor awards, services, that is. Now I've got a way.
Yeah.
Good awards versus a bad award and so forth. Again, if it was an in-kind service or if they wanted me to provide a certificate, I would not have a problem with that, but providing a cash, if I read it correctly, a cash award, I, I don't think we should be giving that as counsel.
Patty, could, what line item of the budget would this come out of?
Well, I'm gonna assume that it would come out of the council budget.
Well, according to the policy, it just refers to the general fund. I, I would still go with the recommendation that I talked about last time, which is that it could come out of our special events council line item.
Right.
Just because to me, this, that makes sense, that, you know, sort of council is saying, hey, you know, we recognize that the public art, our local artists make the village a special place and so we would recognize it and take that on ourselves. What we've done with our special events budget in the past is sponsor, for example, the Christmas party that we had for village staff. But we didn't, we spent less than half of that budget last year, so.
I mean, I don't disagree with what Jerry's saying and I, you know, I wish, you know, I think the, I'm glad we came up with the policy, I'm glad we came up with the form. I wish maybe we had a little bit more, you know, this could be between a hundred dollars, I mean, this, this form and this process would apply to, you know, thousands of dollars. And it seems kind of silly to say no to a hundred dollars, but it's still, it still is a precedent and it's still kind of starting a ball rolling that we didn't have rolling. So I wish we had, maybe we would've put a few more constraints on how we would use that money. You know, maybe that's something, you know, couldn't, we could look at the budget. I mean, maybe we have a very small budget of, you know, a thousand dollars for things like this so that it wouldn't get into, I mean, it's almost like a, it's almost like a little advertising budget or something.
And our special events budget, by the way, this year is a thousand dollars. Last year it was seventeen hundred.
And you had three hundred and fifty-three dollars left at the end of the year.
Last year.
So am I, am I hearing that when you say our budget, are you talking about, there was a budget set aside for ours or?
He's saying for the village council special events budgets, the kind of thing we use for sponsoring parties for the staff.
The employee holiday thing.
I think when we did the picnic to welcome Patty and to say goodbye to Kent, that was.
A special event.
Right.
Right, so this is slightly different than that.
Right.
And so I think what I hear Karen saying is, for tiny little things like this that we might want to do, it might be good to have a little bit of a line item. Even if it was like five hundred dollars, just saying council has up to five hundred dollars to use for this very sort of nominal, like goodwill, sort of community goodwill.
Right.
Kind of thing, it would, it would, just the idea that, that, so there wasn't a sense that we're opening a huge floodgate, but more of a, there's this tiny amount and when it's gone, it's gone and so that people don't, so that no organization feels like, well, let's just try and see if we can get ten thousand dollars or something.
Right, you know, and I do feel like, I do feel, I don't wanna belabor this, we don't need to talk about this for that long, but I do feel like we have, the past few years, we have pretty significantly supported the arts in the art cans and, and public space for the arts and, and staff working on public space, installing art in public space. So I actually do think, you know, based upon, you know, compared with some other items in the village that we actually have, are starting to show some investment in support of the arts greater than we had other things. You know, I, let's, let's just go ahead and take a, I mean, that said, you know, I think it's something we need to think about. I'm willing to support this hundred dollars. I think I wanna flush it out a little bit, maybe, you know, have Patty think about it a little bit too, but I'm willing to support this one.
And I would say it can come from the fund that, as long as it comes from the fund that Brian suggests, which is a very small fund and has very limited, you know.
Right.
You know, we can't, and, and that, but I think it might be a good idea to, to try, to try to tweak this policy a little bit for clarity.
And we did have a motion in the second, right?
Yeah.
And lots of discussions.
Mary Ann, do you have any thoughts?
I'll vote for it.
Citizen comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Okay. You need that back, and where did my agenda go? Next item on the agenda, what's the next item on the agenda?
Sidewalk.
Yes, sidewalk repair and funding discussion. I will turn that over to either John or Patty, who's ever gonna take that one on.
I will take that one on, and if you don't mind, I would like to go ahead and tie it into the levy timeline, because as you can see, the little sidewalk funding update thingy that I wrote you actually ties into the levy, the levy timeline that you asked Melissa to look into, and is under new business. So, as you can see from the levy timeline that Melissa got from the auditor's office, at this point, we will have three potential opportunities to put the operating levy that we currently have in place back on the ballot for renewal before it expires. We, Melissa and myself, in speaking, think that it is better to go ahead and put it on the November ballot for this year, because it's better for us, for budget planning purposes, to know that that is going to go uninterrupted, you know, forward in the, in the budget scenario. But that said, the rest of the discussion was whether to add an additional millage for sidewalks, and what that millage would have to be in order to accomplish council's goals of repairing all of the sidewalks and potentially installing some new sidewalks in areas where there were none. And we were going to base the millage on the inventory that had been done of the village sidewalks in the past. Jason Hamby has that inventory, he's looked at it, he feels, excuse me, that it is badly, number one, badly outdated, and number two, that the numbers haven't been trended at all. So, he is going to have to do a lot more work on that, and has asked for some more time to do that and get that information together. But as you note, what Jason has with his inventory, it's a five-year repair plan that was gonna cost anywhere between six hundred thousand and seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on the price of the concrete and what you did win. That was a thirteen-year plan, not a, not a five-year, it was a thirteen-year plan. And now, what we're talking about is potentially a five-year plan that would encompass still the entire village, and that would make a significant increase in the millage necessary to get the sidewalks done in that shorter period of time at today's dollar figures. So, Jason has asked to have some more time to work on that. He feels that he can have that ready by March. But at this time, Melissa and I would like to recommend to council that we go ahead and put the basic renewal of the levy, plan on putting that on the ballot at the November 2015 election.
I want, let's talk about, I want to talk about these two separately, because that in and of itself deserves a lot of discussion. I'm not prepared, I'm shocked, because I had asked for that information last year, so, and I, I thought we were a year out. So, I'm very surprised, and I don't know that I'm ready to put it on the, personally ready to put it on the ballot this November. But, you know, the sidewalk, Jason's issues with the sidewalk, I mean, what Jason's plan for the sidewalk sounds great to me. I mean, I, certainly, he needs more time. An issue that, we all got an email, I think, from Krista McGaw, I don't know how many of you had a chance to read it. She just brought up the issue that when she and her husband moved into their house, they live in the church on, on Zina Avenue, and she's, they have, they have the pears, the Bradford pears down there, that have gotten incredibly large. And she said that they had to repair sidewalk for the heaving tree roots. That's the other thing that has kind of gotten out of the longer, the broader discussion. We've dealt with it downtown. What are we gonna do? How are we gonna handle tree roots and that whole tree discussion? And I know that that's something I think that John's had experience with. So, that's something that I think we need to factor in. I think it is, we need to factor it in. You know, who takes his trees down? If somebody wants the trees down, who takes them down? You know, so, so, again, it makes this discussion increasingly more and more complex.
The whole sidewalk issue is very complicated. I mean, a lot of, a lot of folks think that it's simply who's gonna repair it, but it's not just the repair of the sidewalk. Sometimes it's the tree and the roots, and how do you make the sidewalk work around the tree roots, and do you have to take the tree down? Because nobody really likes to take a tree down, especially when it's big and beautiful enough that it's actually raising the sidewalk up.
Actually, Krista, I emailed Krista back, and she, because the tree committee put those in, she didn't even have a feeling that she can take them down. I said, well, I think they're on your property, so I'm pretty sure you can.
If they're, if they're in the tree lawn, what's called the tree lawn, John, do you wanna take this one?
If they're in the tree lawn, which is the area between the sidewalk and the curb, then they're in, they're in village right of way. So, under agreement with the tree committee now, after three years, we would take responsibility of the tree. Anything on private property...
Those are ours.
Anything on private property would be private property response, owner's responsibility to remove. Another thing I'd like to add about the sidewalk repair is that if we are interested in saving the trees, it would cost a significant amount, more amount of money per square foot to put in something like a rubber concrete stamp-type treatment, which would be more flexible around the tree roots, but also give us our sidewalk, which could be a possible compromise, but it would be more expensive.
They don't like those trees. They're pears, and they...
Right. Well, yeah, and essentially, in most places, what happens is, the village is responsible for the care of the street trees, which are the ones in the, in the tree lawn, and the homeowner's responsible for the sidewalk, in most places. Brian was in the interview, the meeting with the auditor, and actually, that was, I think, one of the things we, was it that or utilities we talked about. But, I mean, that's the way it happens in most places. The village is responsible for the trees and the care and maintenance or removal of the trees if it needs to come down, and the homeowner's responsible for the, for the sidewalks.
In Bellevue, we did have an exception for trees that were planted by the city, that the city would repair the sidewalks around the trees if it was planted by the actual city.
And what would the, okay, I mean, that, I guess that really depends on what kind of agreement we come up with the tree committee on, and, and, I mean, that's a whole nother discussion that I don't know we want to get into now. But when Jason comes back in, in March, if that's, if that's when we have this discussion again, maybe we could pick up on how the trees are being handled and...
Right. John's already working with the tree committee on, on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already had a...
Future, right?
Right. We've already had, at least, I've had one meeting total, and you...
I had another meeting with...
And you had another meeting just with, so, we're already talking to them about, specifically where they plant them, how, you know, what types they are, that kind of thing.
But our big issue right now is the present.
Right. Yeah, that was addressed in the large group meeting.
I have a question. Are we, do we have the, finishing the west side of Zina Avenue in the 2015 budget?
For Streetscape?
For downtown.
For Streetscape?
Yes.
It wasn't put in there, but Jason took it upon himself to ask if he could reallocate some of his funds and do half of it. He says not the whole thing, because he doesn't think that that entire project should be done all at one time. But he asked for permission to reallocate some of his funds to do at least half of it, the same portion of what we did last year.
I guess I just, part of that is just wondering if we are going to do something with sidewalks this year, not keeping it, not being absolutely stagnant that we're not gonna do anything, that it's in limbo.
Yeah. Jason, Jason came to me with a proposal to reallocate funds within his own budget.
Okay. So, that, will that come before council again, you think, or is that...
Um, I don't think, does that, do you have to move that line to line?
No, it was, it was all within his...
All within his...
So, he was just, instead of it going towards paving, I believe, it was gonna go towards sidewalk.
Right. Yeah, he's, he's still going to do paving, but he wanted to move part of it to do.
Right.
And would that involve taking down trees at all, or just sidewalks?
I think the one tree, Johnny, you've looked more detail at those places, is the, not the one large tree staying?
Yeah, I think it stays.
The sycamores, I think.
Sycamore stays. I don't think there's any trees on that side. There, there are two. There's one up by Bonnity's, and there's one down by Fugs, Mr. Fugs. And I think they, they both stay. I know the sycamore stays.
The sycamore does, but I don't think the one by...
I, I don't think any pears are staying. I mean, I, I certainly would say, would think that no pears are staying downtown, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So, council, any comments about the sidewalk situation? I mean, are we, I think we're just saying we're waiting for Jason for more information?
Yeah. Thank you for that, and thanks to Jason for all his work, and thanks, Johnny. Oh, it looks like...
Oh, I'm sorry, Joan.
I guess, I would like to say that, while I understand that it's been the past practice to have homeowners be responsible for the sidewalks, and it would be sort of nice to have homeowners do it, I really think philosophically, that I don't think the sidewalks benefit the homeowner any more than not having sidewalk. I don't think it impacts the property value. And given that we are saying we want to be a walkable community, I think sidewalks are important. And so, at this point, I would favor doing some kind of levy for sidewalks. I mean, to see if the community, if the community is behind it. So, I'll just put that out there.
Okay. Yeah. You know, I mean, there's, and there might be some opportunity, if you think about it, because the, part of the reason we haven't wanted to separate out levies is that we don't want, we're afraid people are gonna pick and choose, and something's gonna get left. Jason may not like this one, but we may want to, we may want to combine streets and sidewalks into a levy. Transportation, a little transportation levy for both...
She would make him happy.
Streets, bikes, and sidewalks.
So, I mean, just, that, just an idea, that certainly is not something we have to, we don't have to even talk about. So, okay, Joan, I'm sorry.
Joan Edwards, I live on West South College, and this is part of the community that there's a lot of traffic in terms of coming and going from the schools. And there are trees that are huge kataba trees that have buckled up a lot of the sidewalks, particularly on the north side of the street, to the point where some of those sidewalks are just about unwalkable. And Gerald lives in that area, so he knows the ones I'm talking about. And those trees were not put in by the tree committee. Those trees have been here for fifty years, at least, because they're huge katabas, and they do make a mess. But something needs to be done, I think, in terms of making the village responsible, since that is a walkable park for the community at large, particularly the high school students and the middle schools, well, any of the students, and coming and going from the park, too. So, I would personally be in favor of having some kind of a levy that the village says, okay, we are going to be responsible for maintenance and repair of sidewalks, because those trees aren't gonna come down, I would hope. You know, so I think a levy that says the village is part of the responsibility is to keep that walkability open, and it desperately needs, there's places that desperately, desperately need some attention. And they put a bike path in next to the street. So, there's the street, the bike path, the trees.
And then the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And the sidewalks are really bad. However, the bike path, which was made out of a more...
Asphalt.
Asphalt material, is not buckling. So, maybe we ought to think about what we're making our sidewalks out of, as part of the whole issue, so that maybe concrete blocks are not the best solution. But I think the village, putting a levy in to make it streets and sidewalks combined, so that it's part of transportation, would be desirable. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Any other comments? Dan?
Hello, Dan Reyes. Apologize if I just came in, in the middle of that conversation from another meeting, but I did want to, we're talking about the sidewalks, I gather, or the forward-going policy on that, which, from what was just coming up, it would be a question of continuing or not continuing the village's current responsibility with the sidewalks. There was one thing that occurred to me on a sort of technical side that I might be able to shed a little bit of light on, although I don't know if it, if you'll find it to be useful or not, but it seemed to me that the timeline with the sidewalks may deserve some consideration. And it could be, if the village were at all amenable to maintaining its current position of having some responsibility or some vision to see itself responsible for the sidewalks, the timeframe in which they need to be maintained and renewed, if we look at it a longer picture, actually might be a bit longer, could be extended a bit longer than's been proposed so far. The life cycle cost for a concrete sidewalk, if properly installed, should be twenty to forty years. And some of them, indeed, seem to have been properly installed and have lasted that long, but are getting near the end of that life cycle. But the implication of that would be that they don't need to be renewed every five or ten years. Of course, there'll be some sections that are problematic, where you have trees or maintenance that disturbs the conditions that keep the sidewalk in some sort of good shape. But a longer-term plan could spread, you know, spread this out at a slower pace potentially, if, if the budgeting is concerned, and it could be spread out over ten years quite feasibly, to lower the impact on the near-term budget. So, I mean, that seemed to me a consideration that could be on the table and might make whichever path forward, you know, add some more options to the table.
Okay, thank you.
I think that five years was just because...
Paul, I know, I don't think that means...
Was it though, for five years?
Right. And I don't, I certainly wasn't thinking we were gonna be replacing sidewalks in five years. I, I don't think that was the intent of the comment, but...
Because if the levy isn't renewed, then...
Yeah.
This is Paul Avandros. I have a sidewalk problem that I've been dealing with the village for decades over, and the thought that I would be responsible for maintaining the sidewalk scares me. Forty-eight years ago, when I moved into the Winter Street House, water ran to the corner between the sidewalk and the street, off the street, off the yards, to the corner. Maybe three decades ago, the village did some work and filled in that little swale that carried the water to the corner. Now, water collects on the sidewalk. The only way I can maintain the sidewalk, which is safer to school, is with a blowtorch and a vacuum cleaner. It's the only way I could get ice off of that sidewalk, until the drainage is put back the way it was forty-eight years ago. So, what's my alternative? If it's my responsibility to maintain it, there's nothing I can do to make that sidewalk safe. I don't know if I'm required to have a sidewalk. It might be better to remove the sidewalk, then there's no liability. It came because I thought that part of the discussion was making the owner responsible for maintaining the sidewalk. And at least in this case, you know, there's, there's no solution there. There's no way I can maintain the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Any other comments about sidewalks? Okay, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is 2015 goals update. Mary Ann has been working on that.
Did we, the part about the renew, are we gonna bring that?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Karen wants to do it later.
That's, well, it's in, it's in new business. Yeah, it's already in the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, if you recall, we had a spreadsheet that Karen had done, I think, last year, that had the 2014 goals. And last time, I submitted just a document, sort of, sort of, but I submitted my thoughts on the goals, not in a spreadsheet, because I wanted to see if council, well, council's response to what I've done, and if we want to move forward, basically, with what I've done, then I could put things, start putting things into a spreadsheet that would include who's gonna do it, and something about the timing. But what I suggested is that we prioritize the goals, at least have sort of a top tier of goals, which I've suggested three to five goals, and I've listed... which I've suggested three to five goals, and I've listed potentially five. And that also, as we're looking at goals, that we request that our commissions, as appropriate, create annual goals, and that council have input into those as appropriate. And I gave some examples. For HRC, for example, to be working on police community forums. And I suggested council requests that the Energy Board have work up, get the efficiency smart guy here, and we see how we can utilize that. Well, and I would imagine that the Environmental Commission will be working on, in partnership with staff, on the wellhead protection plan. So the five things that I've listed as what I would think of as primary goals would be, one, the three different things regarding water, which include the plant, planning it and beginning construction, the bottleneck and loop issues, and then the wellhead, start on the wellhead protection plan. The second one, which I think we would want to talk about how we frame it, involves economic development. So, I mean, I just said decide how to approach economic development and begin implementation. Then the third that I've listed is, I think, more a practice than a goal, but since we have never done it, which would involve reviewing the budget on a quarterly basis, and I also am suggesting reviewing our goals on a quarterly basis. And the sidewalk repair and construction, and I put in tax levy with a question. The things beyond that, like six through thirteen, are things that were in our goal, they were all in our goals for fourteen, and some work has been done on them in some cases. Well, probably a little bit has been done on everything, but they haven't been completed. And then the last line is things that had been in fourteen, either we have completed or I'm saying, I suggest we should take them off the table, or I don't see them as goals. For example, utilize the village mediation program. I think that's more a process of how we work rather than a goal. So I will open this up to council for discussion.
Good job.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Yeah. Well, I mean, first of all, I guess I'd like to know, what do you, what would you, would these top, would these things that I've listed, one through five, does that make sense to everyone as being what we want to focus on? Or are there other things that you think?
I mean, I think Melissa implied that we need to be reviewing, we technically, we legally need to review our budget in a way every month, right? That we're going to get a review of that and the state of the budget every month. Whether she's here to formally present that every single month or not, I think was sort of vague at our last meeting.
Yeah, I was going to be meeting with Melissa.
And then maybe you would report or something.
She was under the weather, so we didn't get a chance. But I plan on meeting with her on that one. Right, okay, that's right, thanks.
And to me, that's something that we should do now. We shouldn't make it a goal, we do it.
Yeah, but I like the top five goals. I think you did a great job of, I felt I was kind of right with you, both where what was really critical that we focus on and what's important, but less kind of urgent, I think. So I think you did a great job of that. I'd probably review our goals, just realistically, I would, I guess, I think we'd probably just review them biannually, do the beginning of the year and at the middle of the year. But not that I think it's bad to review them more often, I just think it's unlikely that we will, so.
Although there's a view, it shouldn't be.
Although, I mean, these are things we're probably going to be working on on almost, you know, every meeting basis, especially as we're moving forward.
Yeah, that's what I looked at. I, you know, it's, you know, for example, number one, we're already on contract with the contractor to work us through that, so.
Right.
And the bottleneck, Patty hasn't been working on possible solutions, so. Again, it's, we. It's in the mill and it's.
Right, yeah.
It's more or less getting progress reports on where we stand.
Well, yeah, but if you're reviewing your goals on a quarterly basis, if you've met one of the goals, you can always remove it from the list and put another one in its place. You can revise and, you know, if you meet this goal.
It should be review and revise, actually.
The only other thing I would say that with number five is, instead of it being specifically the tax levy, I would, I think we need to deal with fiscal sustainability of the village.
Yes.
I think it needs to be broader than that. I mean, the tax levy is one element of that, but.
Right, because the, one of the discussions we're going to start tonight is the delinquent utility discussion,
Right.
which is going to take quite a bit of time.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, I think we should just take number three off. Is it, I mean, it's, that's a practice, that's something we're going to be doing. I don't think it's a goal. And that would actually go under the whole issue of fiscal sustainability of the village. And then.
And then, well, economic, do you see economic development as distinct from fiscal responsibility?
I do, yeah.
Yes.
Because we haven't really done much on it. You know, the other thing I want to, maybe we can have a general one about, because so many of these things that you have, especially in the second category, are things that are being dealt with by, with commissions. Maybe we could have a general one about, something about collaborating with commissions on their goals, or.
Well, and when it's put into the spreadsheet, is there a space for commissions to be in there?
Who could support it?
Yeah, so I think that will, that will come in.
But I like this idea that you talked about, Mary Ann, with commissions working on annual goals as well. I mean, that's been on the agenda for my commissions to sort of work on that. And, I mean, I like the idea of council also being privy to what's going on and reviewing that, seeing how we can collaborate, as you said.
When you say privy or collaborate, I'm on the impression that the commissions are an extension of us.
Right.
But I don't know that we've ever had them come back and say.
Well, and I'm saying they should, so we make sure that we're, that they're doing what we think they should be doing versus them doing what they think they should, so.
But I think that we've been having that discussion. I think that the fact that we've been sticking to our reporting out at the second meeting of the month, I think that we're pretty well informed of what our commissions are doing. So I feel like, you know, it may not be as formal as you're talking about, but I think it's happening.
Well, I think it should be a little more formal, so we're not surprised.
Okay, well.
Some issues, we are getting surprised on, and they're coming to us asking for a decision, and it's the first time we heard of it, so. Which they're not, it's not getting reported on a monthly basis.
Right. Yeah, a good model is actually, Mary Ann, I think what you did with the Environmental Commission, where you talked about, you know, here are some things that are priorities, so then turning that into a statement of goals makes a lot of sense to me.
So maybe if you want to go to the graph next time, and even for the commissions that are working on things, and we know you can plug those in, and the other ones, just either leave it blank or something, and.
Also, people could, I, thinking sunshine law, if I send out what I know, people can email back.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Just not to all.
Attachments just to me, and then I can put it into the document.
And then you put it into the document and bring it back to the meeting, so it can be discussed publicly.
Okay.
With the knowledge that any email that would get sent to you would be a public record, that could be requested.
Okay. What about the second goal, though? How do we want to frame that or state that?
That's, I, this is.
I mean, we suddenly have a staff person.
So.
I mean, I could get together with John to talk about that.
That might be a good idea, would be to get together with John, and maybe, again, maybe if there's a way to triangulate Karen involved in that.
Yeah, I mean, that seems to me the one that needs to be fleshed out the most.
Right.
You know, what are we going to do completely?
John and Karen.
Yeah, the others are things that are really happening.
Right. So I would put, I, I want us to remember goal three, even if it isn't really a goal, but that we're changing that practice. And so I would sort of make it maybe a bullet point of some sort under.
Yeah, maybe under fiscal responsibility.
As part of our fiscal responsibility, we are committing to reviewing our budget.
Monthly.
Monthly, actually.
Right, and those are under.
And, I mean, we can, we can try to review the goals quarterly. No reason we can't. Try.
And those are under future agenda items, to keep them on the agenda, so.
Okay.
And I guess I do like Karen's idea of, is there a fifth goal that's related to, again, collaborating with commissions? I'd like to just think about that.
You know, you guys stated it in the opposite previously, which was that you task yourselves with communicating to your commissions their goals based on the council goal, so, I mean, you're almost looking at it in a different way now, which is, hmm, how can we move it the other direction? So, I mean, that's just to throw that out there, to say that's something you had done in the past, if you want to throw it into the mix.
I think that's a process thing, too, not a goal. To collaborate, well.
I'm not sure collaborate, well, I guess collaborating in the sense that council may have some parts, and a commission may have some parts of things.
We don't need to have five necessarily. I mean, we could have four with.
Four with bullets.
Or, I mean, or we could have, you know, the sub, we could have the commission goals individually, and obviously, they always tie back to council, but until the commissions are done with them, it doesn't really come to us. You know, until they have something to propose or present to us, it's within the commission structure. So it's not really a council goal necessarily, although some of them are, because the whole HR, the whole police thing, we have tasks tasked back to HRC.
Right.
So, I mean, I think you, do you have direction, you're, I think.
I think I have some direction. Good, I keep moving.
Okay, the next thing, actually, we, I'm adding one other short, short item. I'm going to turn it over to Patty to just give a short description of where we were with our executive session, where we are with the decision related to village solicitor.
Council did meet in executive session. There were, just to go back a little bit, there were, all told, eight applications for, to be our village solicitor. Two of those applications were disqualified because they did not comply with the requirements of the RFQ that was sent out. They both had timeliness issues, the other one had a couple of other issues, so those were disqualified. The other six proposals were considered by council. Three were chosen for presentations, which are the presentations we did last week. Council still has not made a decision. We are still information gathering on one or two, two of those. And council intends to have another executive session at the, probably prior to the next council meeting, and perhaps present legislation at that time.
Thanks, Patty. Now we're on to new business, utility delinquencies.
Excuse me, solar array.
Oh, solar array, we did have that, okay. Another item from staff about the solar array discussion.
Right.
Patty, I will turn that to you.
Johnny and I met with Mary Ann and Rick Walkie. And essentially, this inventory is getting more and more complicated as we go, because part of the ordinance says that you can either generate twenty-five kilowatts, which no residents is going to ever generate that probably, or your estimated peak load, whichever is less. That's what the ordinance says. So we would have to really inventory it with estimated peak load. And to find that, Johnny can do it two ways. He can go back and actually look at all the bills for a three-year period and try to figure that out, where the highest peak was, or he can do a calculation that we talked to John Courtney about. But essentially, it's going to require quite a bit of legwork. Now, we agree that this inventory needs to be done, because Johnny's still finding more solar installations. But what we would like for council to do is to hear from both sides and make a decision as to whether we are going to go ahead on this solar project, because Johnny has devoted probably thirty hours to this already, Johnny. And it's going to take a lot more of his time, so he's putting things on the back burner. Now, if we're going to move forward with this, then we will keep it up in front, and we will get the inventory done and move forward. But if council's not going to move forward with this particular project, then we will do the inventory, but not, it'll be at a slower pace so that he can keep up with other duties. So what we would like to recommend to council is that you set times to have each side of the coin come in, have the Energy Board come in with the presentation and answer the questions, because I think, Brian, you tasked them with a few more questions you wanted information on. We know that John Courtney is preparing the portfolio presentation and the rate study, which he hopes to have done by the end of April. And so what we would like to do is kind of set a couple of meetings where council can hear from the Energy Board at one, John Courtney at one, and make a decision if we're moving forward with this. Meantime, Johnny can keep working on the inventory, you know, as he goes, but it's very time-consuming for him to try to get this done as quickly as we had hoped to.
I'd like to comment a little, too, because I talked with Patty and Johnny fairly extensively, and with Rick Walkie. It seems like there are some significant issues with that ordinance, the ordinance that was developed to allow residents in commercial solar. And that ordinance is going to have to be reworked.
Right, whether this project goes forward or not.
And one of the problems is how to assess the capacity of a solar project. I know that staff has some various concerns about the solar project, which may be different than whatever John Courtney has. I don't know about that. Well, I think some of them are.
Some of them are similar, some of them are different.
Yeah, because some of them involve how we look at, how we conceive this project. So I guess I just, I'll talk with you some more, because I had some thoughts about how we might look at this. But I'm not disagreeing with Patty is saying, I mean, I think we want to present a sort of full picture to council of the possibilities of this kind of project and the concerns about this kind of project.
I would agree with that.
I mean, I will say something else that, you said that the ordinance is going to have to be changed. Something else that has to be addressed separately from the community solar discussion is how we keep people from installing solar in our, on their houses when they need permits, and when they need to be coordinating with our electric department. That is something that absolutely, because it's a safety issue, and it's an issue for, we're an electric utility, and, you know, we have to at some point behave like an electric utility and know what's happening as far as the electricity being generated aside from our own utility. So that's something I would like to.
That actually is, one of the problems with the ordinance is the fact that it doesn't have a penalty clause. There's no penalty clause in that ordinance. It doesn't, normally at the end of it, ordinance, it'll say whoever violates this ordinance is guilty of a whatever, whatever misdemeanor and, you know.
So I missed that meeting, so I'll let you guys kind of discuss this.
Well, it sounds like we need a different ordinance. We need somebody to look at best practices elsewhere to get us what we need. Now, the people who have solar arrays that we don't know about clearly don't have any kind of metering agreement with us.
That's correct.
So effectively, they're viewing it as just cutting down their energy usage. So I'm not an expert in this area, so this is where I feel like legal advice or whatever would be helpful, because at some level, of course, I can decide I'm not going to. would be helpful, because at some level, of course, I can decide I'm not going to turn my lights on at night anymore, and I'm going to reduce my usage, so I have that right. This is a little different when you're generating energy, but you're using it instead of, see, instead of putting it on the grill, but you're not asking to be compensated in any way if you're producing extra. So, for me, those are kind of, I don't, I don't know what, what the, that seems like that's probably an area of law that's been dealt with, but we should have a better understanding of.
Well, and if you put your array up prior to the ordinance, you don't have to have an interconnection agreement, so.
Right.
Then we have to, once we get the inventory done, we have to figure out who put their array on when, and whether it was prior to.
Do we require an interconnection agreement regardless?
You don't have them for the.
Regardless of whether.
Whether it was before or after.
No. It's only for after installation.
Right.
The rest are grandfathered.
For the ordinance.
I would say that this, and I don't, Mary Ann, you were there, you may know this, and, I mean, I would consider the city of Oberlin probably a community to talk to, to talk, they're an AMP community.
Yeah, we can, but, and I, and I, I'll do that. Well, we met with their, their electric guy, but they really don't have much solar there either, but.
Oh, interesting.
I'll find out what, I mean, they have a big solar array that's.
But they don't have a lot of residential.
Yeah, they don't have a lot of residential.
But I'm guessing that maybe they're, at least their ordinances and things are kind of.
I'll see.
Best practice, but you never know. So, okay, so I guess the question before us from, from staff is, do we want to have this two-part discussion?
Maybe Athens. Check with Athens.
When you say, do we want to have a two-part discussion, I, from what I understand, John won't be ready till the end of April.
Yeah, I would say maybe have the energy board come on April 20th, and John come to the first meeting in May. I mean, I mean, that kind of makes sense to me.
John Courtney or John?
John Courtney.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Johnny will be there, too, but, I mean, that kind of makes sense to me, because then you kind of have them back-to-back at your meetings, and they can, you can make that decision then.
And, yeah, if he could get us, I remember at our last, one of our last meetings, I said I would like the full graph of our.
Right, he's going to present the entire portfolio, yes.
That would be great.
Because, and he is going to include the hydro projects that are getting ready to go online.
Great, cool.
And Patty, can you explain why it's important for him to give his whole report as part of examining the community solar project?
I, council asked to see it, I thought, as they wanted to see the portfolio, because that's what, part of the concern is, you know, how these, not necessarily only this project, but future projects like it, if they continue, would impact, you know, the, our energy portfolio, and the fact that, you know, as Johnny and I talked to you the other day, you know, there, once these hydro projects go online, there may be other people who would like to put in solar, because they want their energy costs to go down, and they may not be able to if we allow them to take up the rest of the solar, so.
I'm just, I'm just, I know that we talked about trying to get this done within three months, and this extends it out, and I know that the energy board.
Well, yeah, it slightly extends it out, but, I mean, there's been, you know, once we get into doing the inventory, it just got more complicated.
So, you're suggesting, would you say that times again?
Energy board on the 20th of April, and John Courtney on the 5th, the 4th of May. I mean, that would still give them time to.
Could John come before the energy?
I don't think he's going to be ready, because when we talked to him today, he said he wasn't going to be ready till the end of April, if you want the rate study.
Yeah, no, I think that's important, I mean, because this all does fit together, you know, is, is the, is the community solar going to have an impact on our rates, on the rate, all of the rate payers? So, so we've got some people that are going to be reducing their usage, because they're, they're part of this, but the rates on the community is going to go up, because there's, we're using less energy. The problem is, is that we've got these contracts for a certain amount of electricity. If we don't use that, we're still paying for that power.
My understanding, as I'm learning about this, is that the impact on our, of the community solar is probably not going to be that great.
And that may be true.
The hydro plants coming on and the increased cost of those could have some people want to do solar then, that aren't so interested in that.
There will be people, excuse me, there will be people who want to put up solar so they can reduce their energy bill, as opposed to the folks who want to put up solar to reduce their carbon footprint, is probably the most simplistic way to.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on now to new business, utility delinquencies. Patty, is that going to be you or Melissa?
Melissa has done the lion's share of the work, so I'm going to let her. And Brian, I think this was what the, didn't the auditor refer to the?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We'll bring that up, too.
I just want everybody to just draw their attention to the report. I tried to give a background, as well as what, what efforts have been made in order to try to minimize the delinquency issue, and then moving forward, some of the things that we can do to try to continue to diminish the number of delinquencies and the amounts of those. So, I guess we'll start there with the report, because it basically covers everything, and then we can go from there. What questions do you all have? And we're going to take a look at the recommendations, and I'm sure that there will be some questions with those as well. So, I mean, basically, there hasn't been a whole lot that's been done with, with delinquencies. At one point, there was a collection agency that was used, and from what I understand, the customer service issue that surrounded that was kind of a headache on the, the consumer's end, as well as the finance office's end. So, that was, that was the only thing, as of recent, that has been done in order to try to formally address the issue. Since Denise Swinger had been hired mid-2013, she's been trying to do small things within her position to try to minimize the issue. All of our bills are sent out. Third-party, we use an off-site processing center, which the files are sent to. Anybody that's finalized out is not sent by them, but the files are sent to us, so that we can continue to reprint as many times as necessary, and nobody was really sending any kind of, like, second, third, and fourth notice, and Denise had been trying to do that. So, within the last year, the delinquencies have came down a little bit, so she's tried to do small things within her power and her spare time to be able to try to help address that, but it really is kind of a bigger issue, as is the majority of the delinquencies are renters that move out of town, and then we have no way to kind of follow them, so, so to speak. I mean, we could, with a couple of different suggestions in the moving forward section, but that's really where most of the focus needs to lie, is how we address the issue of dealing with the renters in town.
Can I ask you a question back on the graph? The, 25 years ago, we were at 438, 10 years, 239, those haven't been collected, they've just been written off, right?
No, those are actually still on our books.
But, so between, in 15, in that 15-year period, 200, $200,000 was actually collected in utility delinquencies?
Oh, no, these were, these were the amounts of delinquencies at those periods of time. If we look at 25 years forward, that's the total. If we look at 10 years forward, that's the total. So, it's just kind of showing you how, how it's grown over the different periods of time. So, all that stuff is still on the books, so nothing has ever been written off.
Oh, so you're saying now it's, you're saying now it's 438 plus 239 plus 89 plus 13?
No, 438 is the total.
239 includes 8.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just giving different periods of time. Our system only goes back to 1990, so our total delinquencies on the books are 438,000. I was just showing the impact and how it has diminished slightly, and only a year, it's down to 13,000, where the average was, I think it was 19, 20,000 was what it was up to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 20, yeah, it was about $20,000 was the average. So, the average, the yearly average has been brought down a little bit, just by doing little things that weren't within the office's power to do so.
Does it make sense to write off?
Um, well, we, what's the stat, there's a statute of limitations on a lot of this.
There is, but it's, people have came back into town, and when they've came back into town, if we've still had that on there, I mean, it would, some, we've been able to alert some people of that, and then they have been able to pay, so I don't really know why it's been left on for as long as it has, but that's, it's all there still.
And I really believe what council has to consider is, back in her moving forward section, she has six bullet points of her recommendations, and personally, I'm, I'm for all of them, except, I mean, I don't necessarily see the point of being involved with the collection agency, but that would probably be one I wouldn't consider.
Well, and I will tell you that when we, Melissa and I and Brian met with the auditor for the, for the draft post-audit report, that you'll all be getting, I think, within two, couple of weeks, he said.
That should be soon.
One of the things that he did point out to us had to do with the delinquent utilities, and he, he said, and we didn't ask him, he volunteered the fact that most communities leave it with the property owner.
Yes.
And that would also solve the problem.
That's how we've handled our property, just as a matter of being a good citizen, and honestly, I think it should be the law.
Right. And it would also solve the other problem that we have of what Melissa calls the in-betweens.
Yes.
Do you want to explain what an in-between is?
Basically, the property owners, once, once somebody finals out and moves out, if there's not somebody that moves in right away, if somebody finals out and they move out on the 31st, and somebody moves in on the 1st, then it's seamless. Oftentimes, it's not seamless, and there could be, you know, a couple days' gap, a couple months' gap, and then the utilities automatically go back into the property owner's name, and then the property owners just won't pay for that either. We've got some that are, that have pretty high in-between bills, some of the landlords.
So, if the, if the property did stay with the property owner, it would solve that problem as well, because.
Do we need an, or, so, it says, some of which would require changes to the current ordinance. I'm with Karen, I'm, I think we would only go with a collection agency if there was really.
Well, I think we can actually set that up ourselves. I mean, it sounds like we've got a staff member who's somewhat doing that, so, that's.
Yeah, so I would say the other, the other, the other bullets I'm for, which ones would require?
Right. I mean, which is legislation and which is just policy, practice?
One is legislation, two is practice, three is probably the same ordinance of legislation. Legal notification can be a procedure or practice. The other, the last one, reporting the names in default to credit agencies, could be a practice if it were included in the ordinance. What we need to do is design a policy and procedure manual that includes all of this in it, and pass that as an ordinance. I mean, that's the simplest way to do it, because it has everything in it, and I'm working on the policy and procedure manual. It's just a matter of knowing how council wants to proceed and put them in, into that for presentation before you.
I'm, I'm all for all of those, except for the collection agency.
I can do that, it's a, I mean, it's mostly done.
I mean, it seems like we can do the collection agency at any time if we decide. That would mostly be something that you would recommend, and I'm even a little bit iffy on the, the reporting to credit agencies, and I don't know if that has to be included in.
I wouldn't do that for a utility bill unless it reached, I mean, you could put a caveat that if it's certain amount.
Reached a certain amount, or, we retain, we retain the right or something, but, yeah, within some kind of policy, but I would, I was thinking that, too, somebody brought it up, I, I would say, I would put that later.
If we assess with the properties, though, I mean, that's going to clear up the majority of all of this, because somebody has to own the property, no matter whose debt it is, so I think that that's the biggest, the biggest one in my mind.
So, do you both have the direction you need from us as to how to move forward?
Yeah, I will, I'll get the policy and procedures manual written and send it to Melissa to look at. Johnny, I think I sent it to you and Jason as well, didn't I?
It's just going to have to be something that we try to get finalized before September, if that's something that we want to do this year, because the Green County auditor only allows us to assess properties once a year versus continually throughout the years other communities do, or other counties.
So, if you all just move that forward as quickly as possible.
I should have it at the first meeting in March to, for your first review, at least. Yeah, for your first review, at least.
Because I think it's, it's important that, you know, citizens know that we're going to be discussing this, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Speaking of which, citizen comment on this topic? Okay. Thanks, Melissa, you're not going anywhere, are you?
That's the levy. The levy is our next discussion. Okay, I, now, this, this isn't necessarily set in stone, I do need, I do need kind of Judy to look over it to make sure that my dates and everything were correct, which I think that she did. So, this is just in draft format. I talked to the Board of Elections, I talked to the county auditor. I had no idea that November of this year was even an option until I talked to him. He said it was an option, should we plan to go that way, so I, I made this timeline with every single possible effort via election we would have before this thing would be set to expire, which is at the end of '16, and collections would cease in '17, or payments would be ceasing in '17, so I thought that May would be our first attempt, but he said that we, we could do it in November, so I included that just as a discussion point, so that we've got all of the possibilities before us, but based on what I gathered from the Board of Elections and from the county auditor, I think I've got this pretty solid, and I looked at the calendar to try to figure out when council was meeting and everything like that, so this, we've got three, we've got three attempts at any kind of levy renewal, so it's, it's just whenever council feels comfortable proceeding. I'd, I'd hope that we'd at least go with the May at the, at the, you know.
That's absolutely what I think.
I think the May is a good, is a good thing. We've got the charter thing happening, I think we need.
It's an election year.
Council elections.
The council election. I think it's too hard to do it in the November.
And I really do want, I mean, we have, we have philosophically had this as a single operating levy, which is very unlike most communities. Most communities do have individual levies, parks levies, police levies, road levies. We intentionally kept it as an operating levy, because we felt like all of those services were of value to the community and were part of what contributed to the quality of life here. So, if we are going to separate out something into and have another levy, which might be a transportation levy, a sidewalk levy, I wouldn't mind those actually happening at the same time, only because I do think that that's, that's the way we approach things. I mean, we approach things here more holistically, and I would like people to know what, what we're going to have to do. Now, the only other caveat I would put onto this is having maybe a preliminary discussion with the school board as to what their levies timelines are. We do try to not do them at the same time.
So, as liaison, should I?
Yeah, I know they've been talking about it. I know that, I think we do have one. I don't think they have any new ones coming up, but I think they do have a renewal, so that may be of less concern.
So, just a point of reference, our property taxes annually are almost $900,000, and this levy contributes $730,000 of that. So, if that goes away, it, we'd get about 170, we'd be working with 170,000 versus 900,000 in the general fund. Is that accurate?
But I think, you know, we, we really do this year, we need to start putting a levy committee together, and, you know, I think, because what are we looking at? I mean, we're looking at January 4th, I mean, so we're, we still have a lot of work to do this year in 2015, to get it on the May ballot.
Yeah.
So, I think that we need to, we obviously need to get started on that. And I think the other thing is to, for you, Melissa, to delineate this whole issue of the homestead exam exemption, and if we do, I mean, maybe we don't want to have a separate levy, maybe we do want to increase this. I think that there is a way for us to maintain the levy we have with the homestead exemption, but add, add on. we have with the homestead exemption, but add, add on top of it, the same, a single levy. So, we want to, we want to maintain that homestead exemption so that the state is paying that percentage that the homeowners, because if we, if we change the levy, if we change it enough, then basically it goes back to the homeowners are responsible for that homestead exemption. The state won't pay it any longer. So, we need to maintain that.
Okay.
So, the state pays, I mean, like, for senior citizens?
Yeah. That was one of the changes that Kasich made.
He eliminated it.
Yeah, he eliminated the homestead exemption. That's how he got all, that's why they're sitting on pots of money at the state.
And I think that that provides about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year to the general fund, the homestead.
So, that's, and, and so now the state's paying it, otherwise that would be coming out of our citizens' pockets if we make changes, so.
Well, then we might want to do two separate ones.
Well, you can change it a certain amount and not lose the homestead exemption, but if you change it past that percentage, I think.
Right. Yeah, we just need to, we just need to have guidance on that. Thanks, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or questions about the levy from citizens? Okay. And then, a new item on the agenda, it'll probably be a quick discussion, either John or Patty, about a proposal for ICMA?
Um, yes. I, I'm a member of ICMA, which is the International City County Managers Association, and they sent out an email, which they said it was a follow-up email, which I didn't see the first one, but essentially they have an exchange program for city county managers who, with, that's operated through the State Department, the US State Department. And essentially what it is, is if we host an exchange manager from, it's Southeast Asia, several different countries in Southeast Asia, if we were to host these two international fellows to come over here for a set period of time, it's either May second to thirtieth or October tenth to November seventh, and they come here, they get a stipend that pays for their transportation, their lodging, and their meals, okay? So, the only thing that the village would be required to provide them is like office space and a project to work on. And they would do the legwork. They want the project to be something that engages the community, pretty sure we can find that here on Yellow Screens. And then they would make a presentation to council, and if we were to choose to participate in the other way, we could send someone from here to a host country in return, and we would pay, they would get a stipend to pay lodging, meals, et cetera, et cetera. And I would sail at St. John if we decide to do that because he's got a nice, long career ahead of him that it would benefit him and the village to have that experience. So, unfortunately, this application is due in by Friday if we choose to participate. We can either host the May or the October fellow or both. If we choose to put it off and host the October fellow, we can apply later to do that. John did come up with a list of potential projects that he thought would be good, because John would be the perfect person to work with this on. Bicycle infrastructure, walkability analysis report that includes sidewalks, pathways, interconnectedness, that type of thing, glass farm visioning, CVE visioning. Brian had a potential project of HRC forum on social media interaction.
Right, proper use of social media.
Right. And so, the question for council is, would you like to participate? I mean, as you can see in my report, which I cannot lay my hands on.
Oh, the one that was in the packet?
Yeah.
Or the one you sent out to us.
The one that, the one that I sent you later.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I didn't get this part out until afterward. We would, the programs encourage hosts to provide an agenda that engages fellows in local government operations and policymaking as much as possible. They can include coordination with state legislature bodies as well. They want them to get as much exposure, have tours around the facilities, town celebrations, volunteering activity opportunities. The person, Lindsay, who I was emailing with actually lives in Youngstown, so she was pretty excited that we may host somebody, so.
I think we should look at October, maybe. May's a little too soon.
Yeah, I saw that they, you know, need more in May, but I really think, given street fair, that'd be a great way for them to kick off and, and then, you know, see the village in that level and then move in. So, I agree.
Right, and if, and if it works out in October, we can always choose to do it again next year if, if, you know, that's what we want to do.
Now, do the two come at the same time?
You do, I think you do get, I think you get one at, at the May and one at October if you host both, is my understanding.
So, we could just host one?
We could just host one.
Okay.
And, yeah, and they would, they would get a stipend to stay wherever, which at that point, perhaps the hotel would be done.
I mean, and I also think that May may be a little too early for John. I mean, he's still just getting his feet on the ground, and, I mean, what do you guys, what do you think? You think May's too soon?
Yeah, definitely.
Is council generally supportive of Patty and John?
I'm supportive, but I think they should decide. If they feel like they could do it in May, I wouldn't see any problem with them doing it in May. If they want to wait till October, do it in October.
So, you all do what it sounds like fun? Yep, good idea.
Do you have to list the projects now, or?
You have to give them, you have to give them at least a couple of projects to choose from, yeah.
I think all of those sound good, I mean.
And there were a couple of other ones, too. I mean, I think there's something with our community access station could be interesting. Well, I will say, I'm, I'm very interested, having spent twelve years in Southeast Asia, to help with that, and I can definitely help with developing an agenda that we can put together. I think there's a potential to, some of our contacts in Columbus, that we could get them up there to see that aspect as well.
Well, we can, we can make those people very busy and, and I think engage them in a number of different, a number of different levels, so.
I've got a student who's from Vietnam who's interested in city planning, and so if he's still around, I mean, he's flying off to graduate school, he's a senior, so he probably won't be around, but I'll, I'd definitely be very interested in where, where the person might be coming from.
Right.
Because I've been reading all of his applications.
So, should we wait? Should we apply?
It's up to you.
I agree, Lori.
Whatever you guys want to do. It's mostly going to affect you, it's not really going to affect us. It sounds like fun, and so you decide when you, when it feels best for you. I don't.
Okay.
I think we're together tomorrow.
Yeah.
If you thought that there was something that they could really do and get accomplished in May, because May is the need, then, then go for it.
Go for it. I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
You're back on board?
We're back on board. We met with H and T B again. We went to see one more water plant, which was probably the closest to all of the ones that we, that were, you know, of all the ones that you saw, the, the one that we're going to build. They are going to start work on the water softening option information and planning on presenting that at the public meeting in the first week of March. John, is that where we moved it to?
Yes.
Do you have a date? Do you have a firm date?
We don't have a date yet. We will have a date by hopefully the second meeting in, in February. We told Sam we would like to announce it at the second meeting. As you can see there.
Patty?
Excuse me. Have you, John, sent thank yous to the folks that we visited? There's the staff people?
Um, did you do that? Because I thought Sam was doing that, but.
I have not done that.
Okay, I will check with Sam.
Your follow-up, because, you know.
People were amazing.
The people, yeah, I mean, they, number one, they were real proud of their plant. Number two, it was ama- amazing the knowledge that these guys have of their operations. It was a real good learning experience, and they presented another technique for softening. Some of the experts didn't think of, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, that was a really unique one, that last one was.
It was, it was.
And water plant operators love their water plant. These guys, the, the operators that we talked to were so proud. They loved talking about it. Joe and Brad and Richard were just, you know, talking to them. I've got, we've got so many pictures of these guys talking together, and they, they talked for hours.
They speak their own language.
Yeah, it was, it was great. It was, and I think any of them would be available, you know, if we go with a particular process, to have the guys back over again to get more information and training, so it, it was a great process.
Oh, Joe's already saying, can I go back to Jackson County?
Yes, Joe.
Jackson County was, was out in, you, you thought was the.
Middle.
But they supplied water to humans.
Thirty-eight miles, square miles or something, yeah. It was amazing.
It was amazing what that plant was capable of doing.
Yeah. So, the next thing that is in my report, there is an update essentially on the filings in the Dayton Power and Lights request for a new distribution rate, and I will keep you posted as that moves along. The information from John Courtney is in there on how to potentially assess that. And really, that is all I have in my report. It looks really long, but that's all that's in there. So.
John?
We talked a little bit already about the water plants.
Very nice water plant.
We had some pictures of the water plants. Each picture is one picture from each different water plant that we visited in the last two weeks. On the twenty-first, we went to the Harbor Water Plant, which is the one that's under construction, that's in the picture on the right. Then, White River North is the picture, the bottom left. The Tonka Dulater, which is kind of like a water plant in a box, is custom-built, and Broad on Location is the middle picture, the green boxes there on both sides. And then finally is the, the Jackson County, Ohio Water Plant that we visited on the twenty-eighth, and they utilize sand filtration, which is a method that we did not see at all on any of the other trips that, that we had looked at. So, this was definitely a very interesting and an eco-friendly way to treat water, and we were, it was very impressive.
So, John, when you say an automated, automated box, you mean like it's prefab?
It is a prefab. It's, it's literally in a box, and they bring it in and drop the box in.
Interesting.
They have the walls up in there.
And, and if something goes wrong, it calls you on the cell phone and tells you what's wrong with it to come back and fix it.
They can all do that.
They all can do that.
They can all do that, yeah.
Yes, data does that, doesn't it?
So, aside from the water plant tours, Planning Commission is coming up next Monday. We have two items on our agenda. First one is a request by Morgan Family Foundation to locate their offices at five oh six South High Street. Second is an application to construct a accessory dwelling unit on top of a new garage at eleven oh eight South Zina Avenue. And that meeting is at seven PM on Monday. If you wish to attend. A couple of our Planning Commission members also attended the David J. Allor Planning and Zoning Workshop in Anderson Township near Cincinnati on Friday. The workshop featured an excellent array of presentations regarding some basics on planning and zoning, ethics, planning law, foundations of the roles of planning commissioners. They also had this really great presentation on parking policy.
Presented by one John Young.
That I may have presented on. And it was.
Who attended? You said two people.
Yes, Susan Stiles and Rose Buzel, which is, Rose is in the audience tonight.
So, how did you do, Rose?
It was great. The man is proud.
The David J. Allor, that training is one of the best, and to have John asked to present, I think is a great honor for him, so.
The keynote speaker, thank you, the keynote speaker was, blanking on the guy's name, but he had a book, and his focus was on placemaking and doing things differently from, on a local level. And I have that book in my office if anyone wants to take a look at it. I think it's called Think Locally. So, it was a good work. And I also saved some of the handouts that I got from the workshops, so those will be on hand as well for people to take a look at. And then finally, you know, prompted from our discussion last council meeting about the glass farm conservation area there, decided to take a look at what our zoning allows for the entire parcel and, and figure out and develop some type of plan to, to look at how that detention area will, will function with future development, whether it stays as a detention basin or moves into the wetlands type of environment. You know, my goal with this is to create a couple of things here. One is profile for potential economic development, so we know how many acres are developable space, what are the possible site potentials and challenges that if developers come in, how would they look at mitigating stormwater detention runoff? How does that factor into some of the things that the village is, is enacting there, and also how this kind of ties into the village's past plans and some of the things that have come out of the village's comprehensive plan and the visioning document that was done in two thousand and ten. My goal is to look at all this and try to figure out a way, what are the ways forward where we can develop, you know, ensure that, you know, this stuff comes together in a way that's ecologically sustainable and also is also, and also realizes the village's goals for development potential as well.
Sounds good. In that regard, and in regard to the glass farm, I mean, I, my sense, it's always been looked at as mixed-use development. And we had, there was a presentation at council by Sarah Hippenstiel. I don't think I was on council at the time, on low-impact development. And I don't know that.
Was it Planning Commission?
Yeah.
It was at council, I don't.
It was Planning Commission.
Oh, the Planning Commission?
It was at planning. It was good.
But I don't know that, she, she is with the Miami Conservancy District, and I'm sure there are other people that can speak to that, but I was very impressed with that about the idea of you don't just build huge detention basins that sort of sit there, but actually within the development itself, you do things. So, you may well know about all this. I don't know, but I can put you in touch with her.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. Judy, staff report. You have a lot to report, I see.
It was darn busy, so busy that it's a really short report saying how busy it was.
Let's talk about future agenda items. One thing to remind Judy is that the next meeting is the seventeenth of, because of the holiday, it's the seventeenth of February.
Yeah, did I not put that? I knew that. Did I, did I have somewhere, oh, the HRC?
The HRC report.
And I, I think you can, the resolution, the twenty fifteen dash zero five, I think we can confirm that through the seventeenth. I think we will have a resolution at that point.
We'll have the draft commission's ordinance for the seventeenth, Mary Ann?
Oh, okay. Where's that? Okay, just whatever. I, would you please add, I don't think it's on here, add the joint meeting with Miami Township Trustees on the thirtieth of March?
And I had requested to make a report at the next meeting on the climate action planning group, what, what's happening with that.
And that'll be at the next one?
Yes.
Why, do you want to make that, should we have you make that part of commission reports?
Can you?
Or do, or won't be that freak one?
It's really separate.
Okay. Then we'll put that under.
I mean, I would see the Environmental Commission and the Energy Board, well, and actually, they're, Dewar is involved, that, that, in this planning group, Dewar, who's on the Environmental Commission, is involved, and Rick Waki from, and Eric Johnson are. So, people from both commissions are involved, but it's really, at this point, it's a separate thing, and neither commission is exactly taking on a piece of it formally, anyway.
Anything else anybody can think of?
Well, I'm actually, we should take off the quarterly budget review, and I've actually added it to the standing reports for the second meeting in a month.
Okay.
Utilities Policy and Procedure Manual.
Do we have an ongoing, we need an ongoing item for sidewalks, or do we want to say March, the first meeting in March is for Jason to come back?
That's what he's planning.
So, March fourth, is it March?
Third.
March third?
I mean, second. Three, two.
March second, so sidewalk discussion. Okay. Okay. Anything else? I think that's probably enough. And I will entertain a motion to go. to go into another executive session for the purpose of discussion of potential or pending litigation.
So who?
Second.
Judy, please call the roll.
Yes, Winthrop.
Yes.
Ask one. Yes, Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
I might have a double-headed screening, but I think by the time we do a gym screening, it'll be in March 30th or 31st.
It'll be at 7.